Good evening, everyone. Before we begin, let us have a word of prayer. Eternal God our Father, we thank you for your many blessings that you bestowed upon us. Thank you for this day. We thank you for all our citizens that have gathered here in person and those that are listening by social media. We thank you, Lord, to bless this city and help our council make the right decisions as we move through this council. In your name we pray, amen. First of all, I want to appreciate all these students here on tonight. Thank y'all for being here. I think y'all are from Claflin? All of y'all are from Claflin?
High school.
Claflin? High school, okay. So what high school?
Health profession.
These are students from the Orangeburg High School for Professions, Wilkinson High School, and Edisto High School.
Oh, we are so glad to have y'all. I just got to give y'all a hand clap. Thank y'all for coming. Today, our first item is consideration of August 13th, 2024 City Council minutes.
Move the passage.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman and second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. We have an appearance tonight from Mr. Kenny Kennedy Banks. Miss, I'm sorry, Ms. Kennedy Banks. Five score, excuse me, Ms. Banks. Drug Prevention Youth Group, we're going to ask you to come to the podium and state your name and address, please.
My name is Kennedy Banks. Greetings to Mayor Butler and all the members of the Orangeburg City Council. Thank you for having us here to speak to you today. My name is Kennedy Banks. I'm a senior at Edisto High School and the president of the Fire Squad Drug Prevention Youth Coalition. We are youth selection of the Prevention Services Department at the Tri-County Commission on Alcohol and Drug Abuse. We are, we have youth leaders from various schools in Orangeburg that work to reduce the use of tobacco, nicotine products, marijuana, and alcohol amongst youth adolescents. Our members come from Edisto High School, Orangeburg, Wilkinson High School, and the Orangeburg High School for Health Professions. We also have members from Bedburg and Calhoun County. School has started back, and I can guarantee that by the end of the year, there will be hundreds of kids that will be caught with vapes and DAP pins, just like it was last year and the years prior. One Orangeburg County School District Principal stated to us recently that by the end of the last school year, he and his staff confiscated over 200 vapes from students. We are confident that other schools in our city have had to confiscate a similar number of vapes, if not more. We can imagine that yet again, there will be numerous teachers and administrators frustrated because they have to be part-time drug enforcement agents searching for and confiscating vapes from students instead of being full-time teachers. We can also imagine that parents will be frustrated because their child isn't reaching their full potential in school due to the distraction of vapes and DAP pins and other drugs at the local vape shops provided. We are here asking that our city council make it a priority to establish a zoning ordinance to restrict the number of vape shops that can be allowed in our city, as well as restriction on where vape shops can be located. There is no doubt that the influx of vape shops are an eyesore to our community, and they are creating a public health crisis amongst our kids. Two of the biggest risk factors that contribute to youth substance use in our community are accessibility to drugs and community laws that are favorable towards drug use. Orangeburg has over 14 vape shops, which speaks to the accessibility of drugs in our community. Also, we currently don't have any laws that restrict vape shops from setting up near schools, childcare centers, churches, or youth recreation centers, which is part, which in part speaks to community laws that are favorable towards drug use. These two things make it easy for kids in our community to get vapes and any other drug that is offered at these shops like edibles, DAP pins, and shrooms. According to the Smoke Free SC, Orangeburg has 291 tobacco retailers, and of these 291 retailers, 29 stores sell tobacco, which is 9.97 percent, which are located to, close to a school. This percentage is higher than the South Carolina average, which is 6.9 percent. Also, 200 of, 206 of our 291 tobacco retail sellers are located less than 500 feet from each other. This includes our local vape shops, many of which are, many of which are up the road and across the street from each other. According to the 2014 Communities That Care Survey data, 58.3 percent of Orangeburg students believe that it is, that it is easy to get vape products from a store. However, this data only includes answers from the students from the High School for Health Professions and the Orangeburg Prep High School. We can also assume that if the Orangeburg County District had allowed students to participate in this survey, the percentage would be much higher. As a youth group, we...
Okay, that's your, that's the time. You, you have, let me, one more minute.
All right. As a youth group, we also collected our own data. So far, we have 226 people that have taken our community survey between ages 11 and 61. We asked, what are two drugs, what two drugs do you think are most used in our community amongst kids and adolescents? The number one answer was vaping, and the second choice was marijuana. We also asked, what are three risk factors in your community that are causing kids to use drugs? The top answer being friends who engage in problem behavior, also known as peer pressure. The second answer would be the availability of drugs in the community. The last answer was poor family supervision. In closing, we urge you to once again make it a priority to pass legislation that will restrict tobacco, nicotine licenses, and limit where vape shops can be set up in our city. It is encouraging to see our city efforts to revitalize...
That's your time.
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much. We want to give your hand and stay right there because the city council might have some questions for you to answer. Thank you for the presentation.
Not a question, but I'm glad to see the high school involved. When we first saw all the shops that were coming into Orangeburg, we questioned them, and we're still talking about how many they have here. And we, and we really hope we could really do something about it, and I think we will.
Yes, ma'am.
But thanks so much.
Thank you.
Anybody else have any comments?
Thank you for bringing this information to city council, doing your research and backing it up with factual information. Thank you.
Thank, I think that Chief, you want to say something about the vape shops? I think we had addressed it, or we had attention to it at one...
And I don't think it's coincidental that we received this report. It's great information. We had that discussion this morning during our leadership meeting, because we too share a similar concern about the vape shops.
Okay, thank you. I just want to say this, you know, as the mayor of the city, the, the city has dynamic. Sometimes people think they're in the city limits, and they're in the county, and it's the city limits is funny because you're going to have to go, also go to the county with this also, because if they're in the county, they have to set their, their, their boundary risk like we're working on setting ours. So County Council is on, is on Monday night, every first and third Monday night.
I would like to add, we went yesterday.
Y'all went yesterday?
Yes, sir.
Okay, all right then. Okay, thank you. You're on it. Thank you so much. But this is important to us. We are concerned, and, and we have been concerned, and we are going to give this some attention. Thank you so much. We appreciate y'all.
No problem. Thank you again.
You're welcome. You did a wonderful job. Okay. Okay, this time, we're going to have Mr. William Green, downtown Orangeburg.
Good evening. I came before you to discuss a matter that was brought up a couple of years ago about revisiting as far as the 2:00 ordinance for like sports bars and clubs and restaurants to sell alcohol. I've been speaking with a lot of business owners, and I've been doing my travels, doing what I do, and trying to get somebody to locate at least two sports bars downtown Orangeburg. And I spoke with a developer out of Atlanta about perhaps building a convention center somewhere near downtown Orangeburg. So every time I travel, I'm always pushing Orangeburg. And have you thought about revisiting that ordinance about the 2:00 curfew or whatever when it comes to alcohol beverages for sports bars and restaurants? Because when, if someone opens up the sports bar, the time difference is always, the time limit is always different. Because if you have a sporting event in another country, that means when 2:00 come, you have to run your customers out of the sports bar around 1:30, 2:00. And a sporting event is going on in another country because of the time difference. And I think that would be something that needs to be looked at. I spoke at the county council meeting last night on a project that I'm working on. It's for, it's restaurants, any place to sell foods like sports bars, restaurants, even some retail businesses, to actually work with the Orangeburg County EMS to have a couple members that work in those establishments to be educated with the higher maneuver, other life-saving, and also have a diabetic meter and perhaps a blood pressure machine on hand until EMS can arrive to the restaurant if someone is having a problem there. So I presented that to the county last night, and I think it's a good idea for the city and the county to get involved in that.
Thank you for bringing this before city council.
Any questions? Okay, thanks.
Not really. Thank you.
Mr. Everett, oh, business.
Good evening, mayor, council. Especially our, our young guests. Thank you all for being here. Mayor and council, for your consideration, we have second reading of an ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. As you all know, this is an annual ordinance that we ask you all to pass to make sure that we end the fiscal year with a balanced budget. Last year's budget was, our current, this year's budget, I should say, is currently $24 million, $32,012. We're asking that the amendment be to an amount of $29 million, $53,962. A lot of, the difference is due to the use of grant funds, ARPA funds, different grants that we receive from the state. As I indicated last week, all of our projects that we are working on are funded via grants, with the exception of the new city hall, which you obviously all passed a bond, installment purchase revenue bond to, to pay for. But everything else is being paid for with grant funds. Again, this is just the annual amendment that we ask for your consideration to $29 million, $53,962. Happy to answer any questions.
Are there any questions for Mr. Everett? Okay. Okay. I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance amending the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024.
Mayor and council, I move for the adoption of the ordinance amending the budget for the year, the budget for Orangeburg, the city of Orangeburg, fiscal year beginning October 1, 2023, and ending September 30th, 2024.
Second motion.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kit, second by Councilman Kalu. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. The next item for your consideration is second reading of an ordinance approving the budget for the city year, for the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025. Again, as I indicated last week, we are currently assessing the city in terms of our operations and structure. We're looking for efficiencies and making sure that we are expending taxpayers' dollars in the most effective and efficient manner, so we will continue to do that. We are not asking for a tax increase for, that you would pass that on to our citizens. However, there are some increases via fees that I want to make sure that, that we bring to your attention. I believe Michelle may have handed you a updated fee schedule, and I apologize for getting to you at the last minute, but please take some time to, to read it between now and next reading, if you get an opportunity. But for purposes of, of your information and the public, so I just want to point out some, some fee increases, if you will, that, that I think are important to know. So the primary one that I wanted to point out that I mentioned last week is an increase in the residential roll cart fee, and that's your sanitation fee, from $17 a month to $20 a month. That still puts us way below the market rate, which averages around $35 to $40 a month. So, and all of these increases, if you will, are just really due to inflation, and we want to make sure that we're able to continue to provide the services that our citizens expect, but it, it costs, and everything has gone up. Some other minor increases that may not affect everyone in the public, fingerprinting, for example, we're proposing raising that from the current fee of $5 to $10. We, we do have a, some inspection fees that, that we're asking to be increased. There are some new fees that, that we're proposing. One, or several from the fire department. So there are what are called nuisance alarms that happen, and the fire department has to go out and, and, and make sure that everything is okay. And sometimes it turns out that it's just a nuisance, it's a, a false alarm, if you will. We're proposing that on the fourth occurrence, that we charge a $150 fee. So you'd get basically three chances if, to, to have a nuisance alarm in a calendar year, but if it is a reoccurring, ongoing thing, it, it costs for our fire department to have to, to mobilize and, and go out to, to your home or residence or, or business. So on the fourth nuisance occurrence in a calendar year, we're proposing a $150 charge. The fifth, a $300 charge, and the sixth, all of these within one calendar year would be a $500 charge. We also are proposing a opening and closing at the cemetery fee of $300 and a grave marker of $150. And if I'm not mistaken, I don't, I'm not, I don't think we have any of those, a, a fee for those services at this current time. So again, no taxing increase for your consideration that we're proposing, but there are certain minor fees that we just feel are necessary to, again, cover the cost of the services that we provide the city. And overall, we're asking for a budget of $26 million, $914,205. There's a little error in the, on the ordinance, as I think it reads 27 million, but that should be corrected to $26 million, $914,205. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Are there any questions for Mr. Everett concerning the budget?
If not, we're going to read the ordinance. An ordinance approving the budget for the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, for the fiscal year beginning October 1, 2024, and ending September 30th, 2025.
I need a motion.
I make a motion to approve the second reading of the ordinance to revenue for the new school year.
Second.
Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu, second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. The next item for your consideration is cancellation of the November 5th, 2024 council meeting. That coincides with Election Day, and just for purposes of convenience, we would ask that you consider canceling that council meeting.
Okay. We need a motion, please.
I make a motion to re-council November 5th, city council meeting.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott. All in favor?
Aye.
Eyes have, the motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, mayor and council. The next item is an appointment on the Accommodation Tax Advisory Committee for the term ending June 6, 2025. Currently, there is one vacancy. We received one nomination from Mayor Butler. He nominated Dr. Erica S. Taylor to fill a vacant position. It's an at-large seat. Again, the term would end on June 6, 2025.
Ms. Taylor has agreed to, to be on this committee. She is the Assistant Superintendent of Orangeburg School District, County School District in the area of Communications, and she has already agreed.
If, if you don't have, anybody have any other nominations besides Ms. Taylor?
If not, we would like to entertain a motion for Dr. Erica Taylor.
I make a motion to accept Dr. Taylor for that position.
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Kit. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. Motion is carried.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, mayor.
Mr. Harley, matters pertaining to Department of Public Utilities.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of council and honored guest. You have before you second reading of an ordinance to amend the budget for the operation of Department of Public Utilities of the city of Orangeburg for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. If you recall, this is the ordinance that amends our current year budget to reflect more accurately any of the changes that have come up throughout the year with revenue and expenses. I would ask you to do second reading on this particular amendment tonight. Keep in mind that these numbers, as we get closer, they could change, and we'll do final and third reading at the appropriate time.
Okay, before we read the ordinance, are there any discussions on this budget? From anybody? If not, I'm going to read the ordinance. An ordinance to amend the budget for the operation of the Department of Public Utilities of the city of Orangeburg, South Carolina, State of South Carolina, for the fiscal year October 1, 2023 through September 30th, 2024. Okay. Motion has been made by Dr. Kalu?
Second.
Second by Ms. Grievous. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Eyes have it. The motion is carried. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. Second item is the 2024-25 fiscal budget, fiscal year budget. If you recall in our last meeting, council wanted some more information regarding the options that we discussed. Sent that to council, and before I do anything else, I'd like to just remind council what's in the current budget, and then we can take any questions that you might have, and then we, we can move at your pace. If you recall, the budget continues to maintain our capital improvement plan as set by council as we've talked about in our budget retreat. We continue to hold to the city's general fund transfer of $6.1 million. We are expected to draw down cash excluding loan proceeds of a four, of $4 million. And then we're projected under this current proposed budget to see 120, $134 million income, and on the expense side, we would project 112, $113 million expenses on, on our expense side. The total capital project spending is estimated to be 43.9, roughly $44 million for 2025, and then the largest share of that would be in the electric and the water divisions at 12.4 million for electric and 34.2 in the water division. Some of these projects, of course, are multi-year projects, but I wanted to make sure you had that brief explanation of what's in the current budget. As far, as far as the options, I'll stop right here and, and take some time to go through those once more. Option one would be an increase on, on the water and wastewater, and it continues the plan that we presented to you two, three years ago, and we have been implementing that plan as council has permitted us over the last three years. And, and that would continue with option one. Option two would be a, an across-the-board increase that would include raising the rates on all four utilities, and then that would also be the same for option three, which would raise the rates on all three utility, all four utilities, but it is a hybrid, which includes option one and, and the water, for the water and water, water and wastewater rates. And then option two would, would be the, the same increase as it is in option three. As I have talked to council members, I have told you that I, I think all three of these plans work for us. I, I have no heartburn about moving forward with either one. I tried to give you dual plans that are very doable and, and meet the needs of the utility. The recommendation I would give council based on some of the feedback that I've heard from you is we continue what we've done with option one. Again, it doesn't change anything. Remember, option one just continues our, our normal rate plan that we started out with three years ago, which alternated back between, back and forth between the water and wastewater and the electric and gas utilities increases. So if council has any questions, I'll be glad to answer those, but that...
My question is, not a question really, but with the option one, it only went up about three cent, not little more, not much, so we're still the second lowest.
So, so on option one, and I gave you two sheets that reflect inside and outside rates. So let's look at the inside rate on option one. It would go up a total of $6.13 for water and wastewater.
Yes.
On option one for outside the city, would go up a total of $12.26. Remember, our outside rates are double than the inside rate, so keep that in mind. And then on option two, the outside, the inside rate would be an $18.46, $46 increase, and then option two for outside would be $29.22. And then option... And then option three falls in the middle of the two. They, uh, for option three, it goes up thirteen dollars and eighty-three cents for the inside city rate, and it goes up just under twenty bu- dollars, nineteen dollars and ninety-six cents for option three on the outside city rates. And so remember, one of the reasons we talked about, uh, those two options, which I still think is a good idea, but, uh, those two options give council, uh, some breathing room in terms of when, how long we have to wait before the next rate increase is visited. The initial plan, uh, option one brings one back, uh, every year for at least the next two years. So keep that in mind. But it, it, it is a more modest increase over time, uh, every time we do it. The, the option two and option three is a larger upfront increase.
Can you talk about the...
When I asked you to bring back this information to make, give us the detail of the options. The projected, um, revenue for that option one is around, what, two point nine million? And then the projected option for option two is about seven million. And then also the projected option, for the option number three, the projected revenue is around, uh, four point nine. Looking at that, that means, just for the, you know, for, for the interest of the public, is that if we go with option one, then in the fiscal year of twenty-seven, twenty-eight, we have to bring it back. But if you go with option two, then we have to bring it back around, uh, fiscal year twenty-eight, twenty-nine.
Yes.
And then if you go with option three, they will have to bring it back at twenty-seven, twenty-nine fi- fiscal year. You know, so it all depends on what the market will be around those times.
Correct.
It may go up, or it may stabilize. So that's just for the interest of the, you know, the, our consumers and our constituents and the, the public, so, so that they would know why we are trying to do those options, not to be a handicap to the public, but also to be like a, a buffer for the public.
That's correct. Um, and, and thanks for pointing that out again. The, uh, options offer different things, but they, they get us to the same place over time. And, and, uh, I, I, again, at the very least, I would recommend council doing option one. And, and if council wants to buy more time, uh, option two and option three are, are, are the other options. Option three, again, is that middle ground. And I've, I've, uh, included in, in your packets, uh, where we would fall by comparison. Just, I told you about option one and, and two. Option three for inside city rates on the combined bill, we would fall simply between option one and two on that inside chart. And, and then that's, um, not a big change. But, uh, option three on the outside city rates puts us ahead of Greenville, ahead of our existing, and ahead of one, and ahead of Columbia. And then the next one would be option two, then Rock Hill, Aiken, Sumter, and so forth and so on. So we...
Okay, Ms. Grievous.
Can you talk a, a little bit about the capital improvements, um, that these rate increases would address?
Yes, so, uh, as, as council is aware, uh, for the last several years, we have invested, uh, tremendous amount of money in our capital improvement plan. The current budget before you seeks to invest about forty-four million, which is a significant amount of money. And in order to do that, uh, we need to make sure that we can predict, uh, our revenue stream going forward, to be able to manage the investment, uh, that we're making into utility. That ranges from, um, again, the thirty-four million dollar projects that we're doing in the water division, the upgrades to our substations, uh, we are, are continuing to do. All of those, uh, projects are what demands, uh, the rate to be stable, uh, or the revenue to be stable, and that impacts our rate. And so, uh, if we don't make those investments, if we don't make those investments, we lose control of cost and the quality of service. If, if we don't make those investments, we lose control of the cost and quality of service. I, I gave, as I talked through this with my wife to make sure she could, I was explaining it as plain as possible. I said, if you got a car and you don't take care of it, when the car breaks, they're gonna give you a really big bill. But if you pay a little bit along the long to take care of it, you help maintain it, you don't lose control all at once, and, and you lose control of the cost and how much it's gonna, uh, be to repair it, because you've done your responsibilities, uh, maintained your responsibilities over time. And, and that's what we've tried to do. And, and I, I wanna thank council for, since I've been here these last eight years, you have done that. You have been very gracious and very, uh, generous in how you have allowed us to reinvest in our system. We have spent, I think, over the last, I can't remember the slide, but we shared it with you, somewhere in the neighborhood of two hundred and twenty million dollars, uh, investing in our system over the last five years. And then we showed you that projec- projection going forward is as big. And so that's why these rates, uh, being, um, um, maintained at a, a reasonable level, of course, is so important, because if we don't maintain those investments, you have, uh, you, you sit as board of directors, council, over what is essentially the second largest utility owned by a city in the state of South Carolina. So you have a tremendous responsibility. And so, uh, we wanna make sure we are good stewards of that from our side that you've charged us to maintain. And, uh, that's why we're asking for these things, uh, not just so we can have a, a bunch of money in the bank. We, we wanna make sure that we are able to manage all that we have responsible for, responsibility for.
Right.
Ms. Grievous, I hope I...
Yes, that did help. Thank you.
Go ahead. I think I said this before. You know, the citizens of Orangeburg owns Department of Public Utilities, and we build it to have the lowest rates in the state. I think there's ways you can go back and cut some corners. And I just don't think people are ready for a rate increase right now. People have a hard time paying the bill now. And I'm just not in favor of raising any kind of rates. I'm sorry. I'm just not in favor.
Now, um, item number one is deal with the water and the wastewater.
Option one, yes.
Option one, that one wastewater. We want to have good drinking water.
Yes, sir.
And we wanna have good water, you know, in, in our town. I do understand that the town is progressing and people are, we have more houses being built. Things are progressing at a fast rate for us. And I do, I, 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 I think that we have the best water there is in the state. We don't get no complaints about it. And I think that, you know, to maintain a level of, a level of, uh, uh, efficiency for our citizens, sometime we have to raise rates, just a little bit. Now, I'm not for o- o- option number, uh, uh, two and three, 'cause I think that's a little steep for them. But the, but the wastewater and the water has been down for a long time.
Yes.
And it has been, it's, it's just been pressing down. And at some time, we got to move the needle a little bit. Because when something go wrong, something's not right, they call us. And they call us all time of the night. And I see the urgency of, uh, of, uh, keeping that wa- water and wastewater up. But, but, uh, I think you all have done a good job in investing in the electric division. You all have invested, and we have, uh, put money there. And I'm just not in favor of just raising that right now, because I do, I do, you know, it's a little squeeze going on right now. But I think it'll get a little better after a while. But it relates to water going in people's body, and, uh, washing with water, and, uh, you know, and all that. We have to, we have to continue to improve that, have to continue to prove that. So I do support item number one.
Uh, thank you, Mayor. Mr. Harley, it's always asked upon DPU for a better term would be the Cadillac. The Cadillac. At one time, that was considered basically the best car people can afford. It cost to drive a Cadillac. We're asking now because we there to be a Lamborghini, a Mercedes. But you can't give that kind of service without revenue.
Thank you. Any more concerns?
Uh, just to be clear, option one would require a rate increase every year to get the needle where we need it to be for these capital projects.
So, Ms. Grievous, yes, it's, I wouldn't say every year. It, it was planned, again, three years ago, that we alternate, uh, back and forth o- over these last three years. And it would call for one more of those, uh, or two more. One in, uh, the next fiscal year for, um, electric, and then one for water, and wastewater the next year to get us where we need to be.
So it's alternating utilities, but there's still a rate increase every year?
Yes. A- a- at council's...
I missed the Harley.
At council's pleasure.
I was just gonna tell you to add that on. You don't have to do...
Yeah, at, at council's pleasure.
Right.
Uh, you, you, council wouldn't...
Yeah. You don't have to do nothing every year. You don't have to.
No, not every year.
It's our discretion, and as we look at the budget, we base our decision on our budget.
That's correct.
I'd rather not do it every year.
Right.
No.
What was that, Mr. Strowman?
Nothing. I didn't see anything.
Okay, uh, any more questions for Mr., uh, Mr. Harley? Okay, I'm gonna read the ordinance. An ordinance to adopt the budget for the operation of Department of Public Utilities of the city of Orangeburg.
Excuse me, Mr. Mayor. We did say we weren't going to do second reading tonight, and I looked to my city attorney. I think it'd be appropriate to amend the current budget, however, to add if the, the option that council wants to add, if that would be...
So you want me to wait until next time?
No, no, you can amend it tonight and then do second reading on the next.
Next, okay.
Yes. 'Cause we, we did make a public statement that we weren't gonna approve, uh, second reading tonight. We're just gonna discuss it. But if council is prepared to amend the budget tonight with, with the option that you desire, you can do that, or you can wait to the next reading. It's on council. I, I would, I would prefer...
We'll, we'll wait.
Uh, okay.
We'll, we'll wait. We'll wait, but we do, do need to, uh, ops, we need to do a motion to amend it.
Yes, I, 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 I would prefer you amend it with the option that you want so that we can make plans to, uh, start making plans to make those updates in, in the ordinance.
Can we get to you later instead of minute? We could, we, we, no, we need some more, yeah, we need any more discussion.
Then we can do the amendment to add whatever option that we decide to add to that, and then we'll come back next...
Right.
Okay, all right. We're gonna amend it with the option, okay?
In this reading, it said amend.
But we, we, we ain't have the option in there yet.
Right, okay.
We have to amend it with the option.
Yeah, okay.
Okay? All right, now, we wanna entertain the motion. Go ahead, Kalu, to, to, for the option that we want.
At this point, I propose and make a motion that we add amended, you know, the, um, the second, the reading by adding the option number one to the, you know, to the budget, and then do the second amendment in the next meeting.
Second reading.
That's a second reading, yes.
Yes.
I, I have a question. Is that without general consensus?
No.
You can put it down, you can put it up.
We need, we need to go with the motion. Okay. All right, okay. Motion has been made by Councilman Kalu.
Second.
Second by Councilman Knott, all in favor? Any opposed?
Abstaining.
You oppose? Okay, you oppose.
Abstaining.
So it's one opposed and one abstaining.
All right, so option one, I'll make those, uh, I have staff make those corrections. Uh, those amendments rather, and we will bring you back a budget with option one.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, members of council. That is all I have.
Thank you. Okay, our executive session. I have number discussion of negotiation of incidents for purpose contractual arrangements or receipt of legal advice where the legal advice relates to pending, threatening, and potential claims of the matter covered by the attorney-client privilege settlement of legal claims for the position of public agencies in the other advocacy situation involving the assertion against the agency of the claim, South Carolina Code, Section thirty dash four seventy-eight-two. Item A, pole attachment agreement, uh, health insurance contract, heal crest lease, EV charging stations, and railroad corner. We would like to entertain a motion to go in executive session.
I make a motion to go in second session?
Motion has been made by Councilman Strowman.
Second.
Second by Councilman Grievous, all in favor? Eyes have it, the motion is carried. Those of you that's gonna be speaking to us in executive session, please remain here. If you'd like some water or something, please ask somebody, and they can get you some water. And thank all of you for coming, uh, to be with us. We wanna thank, uh, our NAACP person here tonight. And all of you, thank you so much.